All right. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our December tenth, two thousand and twenty-four Borough Council meeting. Do we have that fixed? Okay. Tonight, we are conducting our monthly Borough Council meeting, both in person virtually. We're glad that you've joined us here tonight during public participation and public hearing portions of tonight's agenda, community members. Where are we getting that feedback? Okay, we'll try again. During the public participation, public hearing portions of tonight's agenda, community members joining us via Zoom may raise their hand virtually, and our staff will unmute your microphone and announce your name. You'll then be able to make comments, council. I will start with members of public who are joining us here in council chambers and then move to those joining us remotely. And we'll have two public comment periods, one towards the beginning, one towards the end. Participation is limited to once per a public participation session, so we do ask that you keep your comments to three minutes or less per session. So with that, we'll start with pledge allegiance and moment of silence.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Ms. Rancho, if we can begin with roll call.
Ms. Berkeley.
Present.
Ms. Carmenito.
Present.
Ms. Dugan. Mr. Kirkman.
Here.
Mr. Moore.
Here.
Mr. Sternfeld.
Here.
Mr. Weiss.
Present.
Mr. Evil.
Here.
Mr. Mayor.
Here.
Manager, Assistant Chief Solicitor, you have a corpse, sir. Fantastic.
With that, we will begin with the first round of public comment. So any members joining us virtually, if you want to raise your hand digitally, and any members who are joining us here in council chambers, if you want to make your way up to the podium, we do ask that you sign into the paper sheet on the podiums, just state your name and whether you're a resident or business owner here in the borough when you make comment. So any members of the public joining us here in the room tonight? Somebody's got to be first. If you want to just lift that microphone.
Just made it. Okay. Well, I did write to a couple of you. Some big items on the list, David Lutzker, the record from Morgan Street and also here as president of the Phoenixville Green Team. So I think the biggest, I mean, two really big items for us on your agenda, but the recycling ordinance gives great hope that the reason why it got attention is that it's able to be enforced. And I know I speak for other residents who are frustrated that they're unable to recycle, that their building doesn't offer the separation. So we're very excited to see this development and I don't know what if the public will be or can be involved in helping with enforcement. We are definitely ready to help with that. And of course, we are so happy to see that Phoenixville will be joining the Sustainable Pennsylvania program. Great to see. I'm interested at what level Phoenixville will come in at. And and what additional items will come out of that, but great recognition. I know you won't be starting at the beginning. So great recognition to join the other municipalities in Chester County that have already jumped on board. So thank you very much for that.
Thank you. Anybody else in council chambers before we move to Zoom? And Ms. Logan, anybody on Zoom?
Mr. President, there's no hands raised.
Okay, with that, we'll close the first round of public participation. There is another round towards the end of the agenda. We'll move into presentations. We do have a recognition tonight for Captain Snook. So Mayor Ursula.
Thank you so much, Mr. President. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for those who are joining us here in person and those who are joining us virtually. We are very fortunate tonight to recognize one of our residents, Captain Charles Snook, and we are presenting him with a certificate of recognition. I will show it to you and then briefly read it to you. There's the certificate. From the Office of the Mayor, a certificate of recognition on behalf of the citizens of the Borough of Phoenixville, Chester County, Pennsylvania. I'm pleased to present this certificate to Captain Charles Snook on the occasion of his retirement from the role of fire police within the Phoenixville Police Department. The borough and its residents are grateful for your tremendous thirty-one years of service. Thank you so much. Congratulations to Captain Charles Snook and to your family, and thank you for all the service that you've provided to the residents of the Borough of Phoenixville. We will be presenting this to Captain Snook tomorrow at the Firehouse, and so thank you all so much. And thank you for those who know Captain Snook. If you please take an opportunity to congratulate him and thank him for his years of service to us. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mayor Ursula, and I just want to also say congratulations, Captain Snook. I worked with him for several years at the Fire Department and the Fire Police is an important asset to the borough and our emergency emergency management services. So with that, move into our tonight's consent agenda. Are there any items that the council wishes to remove or reconsider from tonight's consent?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Yes, I asked that we pull item D six from the consent agenda and reassign that to Roman numeral thirteen. E under the Finance Committee.
Very good. We'll move D six to Finance Committee for further consideration and discussion. Any other items in tonight's consent agenda? Seeing none, what is council's pleasure?
I'll make a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Berkeley, second by Mr. Weiss. Any questions on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed, motion carries eight zero. With that, we'll move into Communications Council Participation. Any updates, communications, or reports from council members?
We had a very holly jolly weekend. I wanted to thank staff for everything they put in Phoenixville First for that. We also had the twenty-ninth Shop with a Cop this weekend was wonderful event. So next year, get ready for the thirtieth year.
Mr. Weiss.
Yes, I'm sure Mayor Ursula will discuss this a little bit, but we had a visitor on Friday. The governor came to visit the borough to speak on his Main Street Matters Agenda item and funding. And I just wanted to thank everybody that was involved in putting that together. I think it was a great event. It was great to welcome him into town and show him our main street. And so just wanted to thank everybody for that.
Ms. Moore.
Yes, two items. One item on the, for those who are interested on the Maury Road, completing the Maury Road project due to the the weather situation, we've been a little bit delayed according to Mr. Crack on doing the resurfacing, but hopefully we can get that done in the next, in the next week or so. So that's the, that's the plan, and I appreciate all the work by all the teams in order to keep that moving. And also, Mr. Crack, I'd like to ask that the staff make sure to put a notice, prominent notice toward the end of the year that starting January one, our plastic bag ban and our plastic straw ban will be in effect. So just reminding people to begin making sure to bring reusable bags to their grocery shopping and so forth. And I think if we can put a little bit more of our prominent notice on the website, make sure that that's, that's that comes into effect. I mean, there's signs around, but there's, there's plenty of places that haven't been promoted in one way or the other.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. Echoing on Mr. Weiss's comments, it was a pleasure. Welcome the governor back to back to the borough as well as Secretary Seiger, the D C E D secretary. I think both of them, it's tremendous to have them in person and present to to see everything the borough has undertaken and succeeded at. And I think it was a lot of great conversations and a great tour to have them here for. So I do appreciate them taking the time out of day for, for that visit. With that, Mayor Ursula, Mayor's report.
Thank you so much, Mr. President. I do want to echo Ms. Berkeley's comments and thank our borough staff and all of the residents who came out this past weekend. We were in full swing for the holiday season. I would definitely encourage our residents to still check out tis the season PXV dot com. That is a probably the most comprehensive listing available through Phoenixville First of all the events that we do have going on throughout the holiday season. Also to echo Mr. Weiss and Mr. Ewald, very fortunate to welcome Governor Shapiro and Secretary Seiger to the borough. I especially want to thank all of our borough staff, our borough elected officials, local elected officials, and all of our police officers and visiting officers who came to help us for that event, and especially all of our business owners. So we were very fortunate to welcome the governor and the secretary here to talk about Main Street Matters. And as many of us know, the Bridge Street and of course, Main Street right here in the Borough of Phoenixville, our beautiful historic downtown, our extremely important parts to our community and have really led to our revitalization over this last twenty-plus years. And so thank you to the business owners, to all of our residents, who really created a beautiful atmosphere and a wonderful welcoming atmosphere for the governor and the secretary. And with that, Mr. Ewald, I, there are so many events going on, it would be impossible for me to list them all, so I will not even try. I'm just going to encourage everyone to go to in this tis the season PXV dot com. Check out all of the great events, but I would like to certainly wish all of you a very safe and happy holiday, and we will see you in the new year.
Thank you, Mayor. As we do every month, we do have our monthly call for residents interested in being appointed to various boards and commissions. Currently, we have vacancies on our Civil Service Commission and our Tree Advisory Commission. If any residents are interested in joining this, either these commissions or any future vacancies, please reach out to staff or your Borough Council person. We'll be happy to walk you through the painless process and to see which committee might fit your interests the best. From there, we'll move on to new business. Item nine, we have three items tonight, including our, our annual budget and everything else. So what is council's pleasure for our schedule and advertise our meetings for two thousand and twenty-five?
I'll make a motion to schedule and advertise the two thousand and twenty-five meetings of Borough Council and various boards, commissions, and committees.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Berkeley, second by Mr. Weiss. Questions on this motion for our meeting schedule of next year? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Up next, we have our downtown Phoenixville parking study that's been updated by the borough's traffic engineer.
I'll make a motion to accept the parking study.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Berkeley, second by Mr. Weiss. Questions on the downtown parking study?
The only question is, is once we accept it as a council, does that thing get published to the website?
It will.
It's ready to be made available.
Any other questions, comments on the accepting the?
I would just, when it does come up, really encourage the public to read it, get to know and understand it. It's, it highlights a lot of cool things and seems like we're going in good direction.
Yeah, I was skeptical. I was talking with Steph this morning. I was skeptical about doing another parking study, and I was happy to see the product that both Bowman put together and the, the analysis that they prepared from, from several really key weekends in the borough. So I think it's a, a sound study, and I think it's important to, to look at all the improvements that, that have been made in the parking for, for downtown. So with that, all those in favor? Opposed. Carries. And last but not least, under new business, we have our motion to approve the two thousand and twenty-five General Fund and General Fund Budget, or Enterprise Fund Budgets.
I'll make a motion to approve the two thousand and twenty-five General Fund and Enterprise Fund Budgets.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Dugan, second by Ms. Berkeley. Questions on this motion?
I would just note that this the budgets were advertised with the Posttown Mercury on November eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, and available for inspection at the borough since that time.
Seeing no other questions or comments, all those in favor? Opposed, motion carries eight zero. We have no public hearing scheduled for tonight, so we'll move into resolutions and ordinances under section eleven and tonight's agenda. Seeing off with resolutions, we have a motion to adopt the ordinance for the two thousand and twenty-five tax levy.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Dugan, second by Ms. Berkeley.
I'll also add that both this ordinance and the following ordinance that will be considered were scheduled to be advertised on November twenty-fifth in the Posttown Mercury, and were sent to the Chester County Law Library in Posttown Mercury for public inspection on December second, two thousand and twenty-four.
And for the sake of conversation, what was the tax levy? So advertised at fifteen percent and we came down to one point seven eight. I think that's pretty good work by staff, so we appreciate everything that went into this year's budget.
Actually, I would like to say that too, because this was, this was a hard year. We worked really hard on it in that department, and I feel like Monica and Peggy and the entire staff in that department were just outstanding in everything that we considered, and I wanted to make sure that they got a little recognition for that.
Absolutely. I've seen none. I see no other comment. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, she carries eight zero. We have our updated ordinance for chapter twenty, solid waste. What is council's pleasure on this update to the recycling ordinance?
I'll make a motion to adopt an ordinance, a member of chapter twenty, solid waste.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Berkeley, second by Mr. Sternfeld. Questions on this item? Mr. Moore? Oh. I see no other questions or comments. All those in favor?
Aye.
She carries. Up next, we have our resolution to submit to the Sustainable Pennsylvania Municipal Certification Program.
Yes, Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution affirming the borough's commitment to participate in the Sustainable Pennsylvania Municipal Certificate or Certification Program.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Weiss, second by Ms. Berkeley. Questions on this application? It's been reported to me by staff that we should be eligible for the bronze level. And then likely higher quite quickly, I imagine. So when you're too imaginable, step up. No other questions or comments on this motion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next up, we have a resolution to authorize the acceptance of dedication of parcel of a portion of a parcel of land identified in ninety-nine Bridge Street, U P I fifteen nine one seven five one.
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Berkeley, second by Mr. Sternfeld. Any questions on this acceptance of the portion of a parcel?
I think you misstated it. You said one seven five dot one, and it's one.
One five seven, sorry. Yep, transpose that a little bit. So it's U P I number fifteen nine one five seven dot one.
I'll just give a quick background. So we expect that this portion of property will be used as a part of the Star Street Extension. However, we have to lay out and accept roadways by ordinance. So by this resolution, we are simply accepting the piece of property. We are not actually opening the road. That ordinance will probably be, you know, run, run through the committees or come through council in January.
Any other questions or comments on this motion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next up, for our ARPA funding, we have a resolution for authorizing the S L F R F funds for the K M A, K M E tractor-driven aerial purchase. So moved. There we go.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Sternfeld, second by Ms. Berkeley. Any questions on this?
Mr. President, I may, just, just for edification of the public. It reads on the agenda allocation of the borough S L F R F to the K M E T D A purchases the standard allowance for lost revenue under A R P A. It's like an alphabet soup. S L F R F is the state and local fiscal recovery funds. The Corona buyer state and local fiscal recovery funds. I, I always like to spell out abbreviations. A R P A is the American Rescue Plan and K M E T D A is a K M E custom tractor drawn aerial. And it costs one point nine million dollars. Thank you, Mr. President.
Only the U.S. Treasury can come up with such eloquent acronyms.
I can give a quick background if it may help. As you probably know, we adopted a resolution last month to allocate the ARPA funds that we received as lost revenue. And when we went to input what we needed to do in the U.S. Department of Treasury website, we realized we had to allocate those lost funds to a purchase that we were already engaged in. And so the, as you know, the tractor drawn aerial, the, which is a fire truck, is something that we saw a need to apply these lost revenues funds to, and that's what we've done in order to satisfy the U.S. Department of Treasury requirements for these ARPA funds.
Which led to my question of, did we have in, have we had an annual, we financed that purchase, correct? I thought we did. Does having been able to apply these funds modify how we're expending our general fund, either our capital project funds? I seem to recall that when we purchased this truck, we financed it like, like for a ten-year. Am I wrong, or help me?
No, we actually borrowed money from the water department.
Oh, okay.
So we had to pay that water department back. And so that's the loss revenue that goes back to the water department.
Okay, so then this doesn't really modify any expenditures that we would be making on an annual basis for, for paying off the, I thought there was a note or something like that. Okay, so this doesn't really change any of the budgeting that we've done. It just satisfies that the debt the borough had to the water department. Okay.
Any other questions on the ARPA resolution? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Lastly, under resolutions tonight, we have a resolution to consider accepting dedication of portion, the portion of parcels of land having frontage on Paradise Street, U P I numbers fifteen eight twenty-two and fifteen four twenty-four. What is council's pleasure?
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Berkeley, second by Mr. Sternfeld. Scott, you have some background on this one?
Sure. So this is similar to the one I, I just explained in Star Street. This is related to the Paradise Village development, as you know. And part of that development, we expect the developer to build a street. And that street would eventually be dedicated to the borough. There was a requirement in their approval resolution that they provide an easement to us within a certain amount of time, and the owner decided they rather provide us with the, the fee ownership rather than an easement, which is legally acceptable. So similar to the Hall Street Extension, we are accepting the property. We have not yet opened a street, and we will have to process an ordinance to open a street. And with that one, we may need to consider when, the timing on that of when that's appropriate.
With that background, any questions from council? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries eight zero. That brings us into section twelve of tonight's agenda with reports of committees, boards, and commissions. We'll start with Ms. Dugan and Harb.
Everything was already approved in the consent agenda.
Thank you. Mr. Moore, planning commission?
Nothing. Your reports on our projects are under review.
Mr. Kirkman with regional planning?
Thank you, Mr. President. We had a trail subcommittee meeting a couple of weeks ago with regional planning, and there's a lot going on in the region in addition to what's going on in Phoenixville. The Freedom Foundation, according to Schuylkill Township, is open to having the Freedom Trail go through its property. Just north of Valley Forge Park or west. And the, in Charlestown, the French and Pickering Creek Trust is working to do something to preserve the open space of the nature center, the old Great Valley Nature Center there on Route twenty-nine. And in the middle of the county, the, the county itself is getting ready to go to bid with a couple of trail extensions next year, extending the Struble Trail Extension to Marsh Creek Park up above Downingtown and Coatesville. And also a Chester Valley Trail Extension from the Main Street in Exton to the Oakland Corporate Center, which is just a mile or so down the Route thirty there. But the big story is that the East Pike Lane Supervisors have approved an Aldi for, I guess it's Schuylkill Road out there, Route twenty-three, where sort of across that entrance from Oak Grady's. That's what I have. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Rich. Back to Ms. Dugan with rec board?
There's plenty here that we have to do still because we've always got recreation things we can do around town. We'll start with the Fresh T U Chester County Food Bank Mobile Market. That is the first Wednesday of every month between ten a.m. and twelve, starting January eighth, goes through May seventh. Parents Night Out, that is December thirteenth from five thirty to eight thirty. Holiday Helpers is a, students from education, educators rising, and they're trying to reach a fundraising goal, and they're going to be set up at the Rec Center on December twenty-first from twelve thirty to three thirty, and you can bring your wrapping paper and gifts and with a donation, they will wrap your presents for you. And then there's Safe Sitters. It's designed to prepare students since from sixth to eighth grade to be safe at home alone or from watching a younger sibling, and that's Saturday, January fourth, nine thirty to three thirty. Yoga and Holiday Handbells, that is Wednesday, December eighteenth, from six to seven. There's a Positive Coaching Alliance. It's a drop-in workshop. And that's coaching with empathy, creating a positive developmental youth sports environment for young athletes and always starts with a coach. So this one is, sounds like a great opportunity for anyone interested in that. That's Saturday, January eleventh, from two to four. We've got several yogas. We've got the yoga with group hypnosis on January sixth from, from six to seven. And then there's yoga with Celtic harp. And that's January thirteenth from six to seven. Table tennis group lessons, that's Monday, the December ninth to January sixth for youth is six to seven fifteen and adult is seven fifteen to eight thirty. STEM Spire is a student-run program to help the changes with science, technology, engineering, and math. Mondays from six to seven, starting, it just started this month from on the second. Music-minded mixing with the spin therapist. It's a therapeutic mixing lessons offered through music-minded mixing DJ programs. That is Mondays, February second to April twenty-eighth from five thirty to six thirty. Junior A basketball academy for the winner of two thousand and twenty-five. It's a prep skills and Jill training program. Mondays from January sixth to February twenty-fourth. Basketball with jumpstart sports. Saturday is January fourth to February eighth from nine to eleven a.m. Ramp-up skateboarding. Winner indoor program, and that's January sixteenth to March sixth. There are eight sessions. Beginner golf starts January ninth to February sixth. And then Saturday Drawing, Saturday Drawing Club with Young Rem Brands on Saturdays from February, or January eleventh to February twenty-second. Strength and Stability Fitness Class, that's Wednesdays, December fourth to February fourth. Adult Dance Cardio, that's Tuesdays, January seventh to March eleventh from six fifteen to seven fifteen. All-Ability Adult Yoga on Thursdays, January ninth to March thirteenth from five to five forty-five. And finally, Pickleball Clinic Universal Rackets, Rackets is Tuesdays, the indoor session one is December seventeenth to January fourteen, and the second one is January twenty-fourth, or January twenty-first to February eighteen. And that's all I have for now.
Thank you, Ms. Dugan. On to Tree Advisory Commission, Mr. Carmenito.
Yes, Mr. President, no tree commission meeting this month, but
uh, borough staff ordered 100 trees that we'll see going in over the next couple of weeks. So looking forward to those happening. Also in the budget proved tonight, we saw an increase in funding for shade tree or tree advisory commission. So um, look over the next couple of, uh, months to see even more trees going in. So looking forward to seeing that happen. And our next meeting is Monday, January 6th.
Thank you, James. Move on to Human Relations Commission, Ms. Berkeley.
The Human Relations Commission met last week for our December meeting and we started a series of trainings with the Pennsylvania, um, Human Relations Commission was really great overview of HRCs general and, and what the state can provide our HRC. Uh, we have also still been plugging along at our scorecard. So in February, we're going to jump into the next section of that if anybody wants to join the meeting.
Thank you. And we'll move right into, uh, section 13 and tonight's agenda with council action referred from committee personnel and public safety. Ms. Berkeley?
No action to report at this time out of pu- uh, personnel and public safety.
Thank you. We'll move to Parks and Rec with Mr. Moore.
Uh, no actions to report at this time. It wasn't already handled by the consent agenda. There is no meeting this month. Our next meeting will be according to the January schedule.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Moving on to Policy Committee, Mr. Cármenito.
Yes, Mr. President, um, the first item, I believe, I had to make a motion to table that. I think we, we had discussed.
Yeah, yeah. So if that's your intention.
Yeah, we had discussed not making act, taking action on this. So I entertain a motion to table item one. Do I have to read the whole thing?
No, I think that's sufficient.
So moved.
Second.
Good. There's just no discussion on tabling. So, all those in favor?
About it, further in committee.
Exactly. Yep. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion's table till January.
All right, Mr. President, the, the next item on the agenda is a motion to recommend Borough Council Schedule and Advertise an Ordinance Amendment, Chapter 22, subdivision land development, Part 6, impact statements.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Cármenito, second by Ms. Berkeley. Any questions from council on this item?
Uh, yeah, I just, um, actually kind of caught me a little bit by surprise. Um, I, I guess I, if I could maybe have a, a Borough Council uh, or solicitor kind of summarize or Mr. Crack, what we're modifying here in, from the e- existing, uh, traffic impact study?
Yeah.
So what's been the, uh, impetus for, for this a, a, a change?
Yeah, I'd be happy to. So a- as you probably know, we updated our impact study provision of the subdivision and land development ordinance four or five months ago. Um, a- and at that time, uh, Mr. Kirchner, uh, brought up that some of the multimodal provisions were no longer clearly reflected. Um, a- and while we think modern traffic impact studies should address, uh, multimodal, uh, transportation a- as we looked into it more, we agreed. You know, why leave a gray area? Let's keep it crystal clear. Um, we also took that opportunity to get a little additional feedback from our traffic engineer, uh, who suggested some updates as well. Uh, so, so really, uh, the update is to make sure that we did not have gray area with multimodal ter- transportation, that that is a required priv- part of any traffic study for our land development. Um, a- and also some more technical provisions that the traffic engineer wanted to see about, um, the, the distance surrounding traffic study and what type of intersection should be included in that type of thing.
Uh, I guess my, my principal question is, uh, applicability sections 1A. In terms of the scope, w- when you're required to do a traffic impact study, is this in any way significantly different or in some way different from the previous scope of requirement for a traffic impact study?
So the, the scope, uh, is not changing from the version we adopted, I think, five months ago. Uh, five months ago, we did, um, update the scope a little bit. Um, a- and I believe the, uh, I believe it's the 30 or more dwelling units was, was the new addition, uh, to that scope.
Okay, and this is scheduled and advertised. I mean, this ordinance will be discussed in the next when it, when it comes up. So we could, we can dig in it further then. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments on this motion to schedule and advertise? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. With that, move on to ITTS with Mr. Weiss.
Uh, yes, Mr. President, one item coming out of ITTS this month. Um, I'd like to, uh, make a motion to approve the Retriever Incorporated Profit Sharing Agreement.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Weiss, but second by Ms. Berkeley. Any questions on renewing this contract? I think we've been with them six or eight years now, so. Okay. Mr. Kirchner?
I, I just have one question. For one, I, I think this is great that we can, um, we can, we can dispose of things like televisions and CRTs and microwaves. Um, hopefully we don't see them dumped, uh, out on 113. But, um, with regard to, and, and this may be too much detail for, for this discussion, but air conditioners, is there a, um, a, a requirement that the, um, freon be removed from them?
Yeah, i- in order to take an air conditioner, you have to remove the freon.
Any other questions on this motion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries eight zero. Going back to Ms. Dugan with finance?
Well, we had one that was moved from the consent agenda, so I'll just make the motion to approve. Um, staff's recommendation to open an investment account with Univeast.
Second.
Uh, Gene, if you want to give us some background, I think some information has changed since the, uh, since the finance meeting, which may change the course of this, so we'll.
So, uh, at the, uh, November 28th Finance Committee meeting, uh, Mr. Kirchner brought up, uh, asked a question about the interest rates. Was that going to be a locked-in rate? Cause it was a good rate, uh, compared to, uh, uh, our, our current provider, which is Triest. I think Triest is 4.1, 4.2. And, uh, Univeast was at five or 5.1. We've since learned that that is not locked in. Uh, that it is going to vary as the government varies. And so with the amount of work that we'd have to do, getting signature cars, opening up account, uh, having it, uh, in that particular location for the amount of dollars that we might gain out of that, we did not see, we're not, we've discussed it internally. We don't see a reason to further recommend that. And so, uh, our recommendation is to not approve, uh, that request and, uh, we'll let them know that, uh, we're going to stay where we're at.
So with that, uh, to go along with staff's recommendation, the recommendation at this point would be to vote against. So all those in favor? Opposed. There we go. Motion carry or motion, yeah, motion, ha- motion fails zero eight. All right. Moving on, we have our second and final round of public comment. So any members of the public wishing to make comments tonight, either digitally or in person, uh, please raise your hand on the Zoom platform if you're looking to make comment online. And if you're looking to make comment in person here in council chambers, please make your way up to the podium. We just asked that you sign in on the paper on the podium as well as provide your name and whether you are a resident or taxpayer. Uh, when, when making comment. Ms. Logan, anybody on Zoom?
There are no hands raised, Mr. President.
Okay, with that, we'll close our second and final round of public comment, uh, moving us into section 15, which is Communications Council Participation. Uh, I'll make the, I'll lead into the closing here with a comment that, uh, as is our tradition, uh, each year we do cancel the rest of our, uh, committees, commissions and boards. So for the rest of the month of December, we will not be holding any, uh, meetings, uh, here in council chambers for planning rec, parks and rec, infrastructure, finance or policy. We will see, see those meetings again in January. Uh, I wish, uh, anything, any other questions or comments from council? Seeing none. Um, moving in, we do have, uh, staff reports in our packets from manager, police, fire, planning codes, public works, finance, human relation, or human resources and recreation. Uh, before we adjourn into executive session, we do like to acknowledge our long-term employees. This month in December, we are recognizing the employment, uh, hallmarks of Peter Delacquilla in sanitation of 20 years. Craig Green in Streets for 20 years. Uh, Doug Long has been with Streets for, Streets Utilities for 20 years. Michael Barley has been in our code enforcement office for 13 years. Darren Heck has been in our Water Distribution Office, uh, Department for 13 years. Uh, Detective Jason Kamarowski has been with our Police Department for 12 years now. Officer Chase Rondo has celebrated his first year anniversary. And John Olson in our Streets Department has celebrated his one-year anniversary. So that brings us to a nice round even number of 100 years of service celebrated uh, amongst our employees this year. We do appreciate all the service that they provide and exceptional, um, detail they, um, they work towards in the borough here. So with that, we do have, uh, uh, we will be adjourning into, uh, executive session tonight to discuss the potential purchase of real estate property located along Mallory Road. So with that, what is council's pleasure?
Motion to adjourn to executive session.
So.
Seeing no questions, all those in favor? Opposed. Thank you very much. Have a great night. Happy holidays. We'll see you in January.